Hello, Vice Mayor Jordan. Just double checking that you can hear us. And if you would mind unmuting so we can hear you, then we should be all ready to go.
I can hear you.
Awesome, thank you. Give me just a second to get everything running.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Vice Mayor, we are all ready to go this morning. So if you'd like, we can call to order the Wednesday, May 18th Reno City Council and Redevelopment Agency Board's special meeting.
Yes, please at this time, call the meeting to order.
Okay, so our first item today is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, if we could get City Manager Thornley to lead us to the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, back to you for real call and public comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Breckus.
I'm here today.
Dour.
Here.
Delgado.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Shevy, absent at this time. Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council. Our first item on today's agenda is general public comment. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to both matters on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action upon any matter not agendized for today. When you're called on to speak for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. And lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there's disruptive behavior and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Our first commenter today is George Campione, followed by Jerry Mifsud.
How does this work?
If you just place it up there, George, then we will go ahead and get it up for you.
There we go. Okay. My name is George Campione. My, what else? My address is 501 West First Street, Reno, Nevada, 89503. In case you don't know, that's the Truckee River Terrace Apartments, all right? Put this up here. The housing was not affordable. The housing was horrific. This is a quote by Hillary Shevy, who happens not to be here, okay? It was wrong to continue to say that we were away people's housing, took away people's housing. Honestly, what happened is it needed to happen a long time ago. Let it go on. We let it go on along and subjected people to horrific conditions for a long time, and that's what we should be ashamed of. Okay. First, horrific and affordable. I hear all of you talking about affordable. That is a government-manipulated term. You guys are using semantics to make people believe you're talking to the people that are concerned about really rent increase. The courtyard, which Jacobs has purchased for $3 million, right? Where is it sitting? It's sitting unused. How is anybody going to be able to make any money on the courtyard at this point? I was paying $600 a month up until January 31st of 2020. They moved me into the Truckee River Terrace Apartments, right? Okay, so we get there, I'm now paying $970. And I want you to see what they consider proper disposal of trash. All right? This is, this is right outside. You have two entrances, the front and the rear. Look at the garbage piled up, okay? Who had to call to get this cleaned up? Me. I had to call the Health Department, who then referred me to the Environmental Control. And of course, who do they call? Cromer, to make them sure they cleaned it up. And yeah, they were out there with their elbows moving, all right? But you know how long that stood? Look, they started with the garbage cans, all right? And the reason this all happened was because they did not fix their trash compactor. I sat in my room for almost two years with that compactor pounding at the beginning of Friday night, going all the way through Monday morning, all right? Now, this is wrong. You are not doing a job, okay? You have artificially increased property value, Jacobs has. Everybody's jumping on a bandwagon, all right? Because of lease agreements, you can't do anything, all right? We have no cause. The laundry services have been discontinued for two weeks. We didn't have laundry because they turned it off, all right? And I have all the documents I need to show you.
Jerry Mifsud.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Jerry Mifsud.
And Madam Clerk, after Jerry has finished speaking, I'm going to turn it to Councilmember Reese to run the meeting.
Thank you.
We need a quorum over this side, not just that side. Anyway, my name is Jerry the Pizza Man. That's a name I'm going to use when I run for Oscars after he leaves War III. I'm going to talk about Teglea Paradise Park, and I wish that we could pay close attention. What's happening to the homeless people out of Teglea Park, okay? Number one, they're not there anymore. Number two, they're moved and pushed to another side of the city. And in some cases, they're put on a Greyhound bus and ushered out of town. That's bad. What else about Teglea Park? The ponds, they are straight up filled with E. coli that develops in the heat of the summer. And that goes from coliform, which is normal habitat, what have you, but in the summertime, that turns into E. coli. You folks were not pleased at all when I called the federal EPA in to come and check your, I got your testing. It was a big mistake because they looked at your testing and said it was inefficient and incomplete, how you test the ponds. The federal EPA said you have to remove the ponds. Drain the swamp, that's a phrase. Take out the ground. Mr. Teglea gave you this years ago. Yeah, the ponds were there for his cows. What are you doing about that? Well, zero. I was told at one time, we have $1.2 million to go into Teglea Park. The federal EPA told me it'll take you $3 million to do something. To do that, take everything out and replace it. You have people fishing. You have people fishing there. Make the signs bigger. I've talked to the park people. Make the signs bigger, for God's sakes. You have dogs that are lapping the water. I've been out there twice where a mother and a child and a dead dog was laying there. I called up the city, they did nothing. What the hell's going on here? You need to put a skirt around all the pond areas if it is going to affect the animal, I mean, the natural habitat. You know, you see fish floating, geese floating, you know? This is acceptable? Not really. You have what's called Reno Arch Kitty Park. The big cement animals are all tripped and broken. They need to be replaced. You promised me a dog park two years ago. Jeff Mann, he's retired. Anybody that I see that step on their toes, they retire. Where's a dog park? It's nowhere in sight. You have drug dealing going on in the parking lot. You have one light bulb in that parking lot. The Paradise Drive, I talked to Tony Powell of the energy company, improve the arms on that street so we stop the drug dealing. Ba-dum, ba-dum, ba-dum. Outside of that, I want you to have a nice day and please do some, it's in a poor neighborhood. That's why you're not doing anything. You want, your opulent neighborhoods, you seem to feed that, but not here.
Ms. Mifsud, I'm excited that you'll be considering political life. Next time you show up in the chambers, please dress appropriately for this body. That's your warning.
I asked somebody.
That's your warning, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Why don't you put a, what would you dress in?
Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Mr. Mifsud, I'm going to have you removed if you do not. Yes, I can. Thank you, your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, our next item on the agenda today is A4, Approval of the Agenda.
Can I get a motion, please? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item is Item B1, Budget and Fee Schedule Adoption. Ms. Vicky Van Buren.
Good morning. Vicky Van Buren, Interim Finance Director for the Record. I'm very pleased to be here today to present to you the budget for fiscal year 2223 as being proposed. A lot of this information you're going to see today is information that we've covered previously in the budget workshops. So we have updated it with a few changes that I will highlight in here, but a lot of the presentation materials are the same, so I will kind of go through them quickly. And then if there are questions, we can go back to them, but I will go ahead and go through the whole presentation as council has seen most of this information previously. So, first slide here, our budget. We build this budget and we present it today and we focus it on council's overarching goals. And they've really driven the priorities that were put into this budget, and we're going to highlight those as we move through the presentation. We're going to start by summarizing all of the funds. And so the total budget that you're looking at is $915 million, the largest being the General Fund, and then sewer, the second largest, and then capital projects. As we know, we have a lot of capital projects as we went through those in the workshops previously. The changes that you're going to see in this budget as opposed to what was presented in the tentative budget, the tentative budget being the one that was presented to the state on April 15th, are two additional full-time positions in the sewer, in the sewer enterprise. The sewer capital was updated as well from what was on the tentative budget. This did not change from what was presented to this body at the workshops at the beginning of May. We did have those updated numbers in there for those workshops. It was just those capital numbers as we got new numbers in and kind of refined those through Public Works. Those numbers were not available when the budget was done on April 15th, but from what this body saw in May, that incorporated those changes. The only other change we have in here is an increase to the council donation funds of $10,000 each. The next slide here shows the budget by function. So the total budget is $915 million. That does include the redevelopment area in this number. So it's the total between City of Reno Redevelopment 1 and Redevelopment 2. And it gives you a good idea of the breakdown between public safety, public works, culture and recreation, how that shakes out as far as function within the city. When we look at the recommendations, the total recommendations, and this, these slides have all been updated with those couple of changes that I mentioned earlier. So the proposed changes are $8.5 million in additional costs, and that does include 54 full-time positions and then some additional one-time or specific items as well. The new positions, there's 54 positions that are being presented today, new positions. General Fund, almost 29 of those, sewer, eight and a half, and then the other funds, you have 14.6. The other funds include street, fleet, and room tax. When we go into the positions as proposed by council priority, you'll see that each priority is listed and the number of positions being proposed with that priority are listed as well. We have 14 in public safety, 16 in infrastructure, and 12 in economic development, as well as six in fiscal sustainability, four in arts and parks and historical resources, and two in the hand program. When we look at the items that are being proposed that are not position-related, this is, this slide represents that. So you have a few one-time items such as vehicles or a plow truck, and then you have some ongoing items such as the on-call funding in streets. This is a new slide that was not presented during the workshops, but we wanted to give you an idea of the full-time positions and how those relate to the functions. And so you'll see in community support, we have 14 new positions that are being proposed. So the top number is the number that we're currently at with the new proposals added and then the proposed for the new budget. So we had 105 for proposing 14 new positions, so 119. In public safety, we had 772, proposing 14 new, so a total of 786. And in total, you're looking at 1,423 positions. When you look at the positions year over year, you'll see that the Public Works Department has 28% of the positions that are being recommended are in Public Works, 26 in Community Development, and then 26 in Public Safety. There's 15, 14, and 14 respectively amongst those. When you look at the positions as where they're coming from funding source-wise, the, I'm sorry, not positions, these are the totals, total dollars. So total dollars, this would be the positions and the one-time funding or the ongoing funding that's included in the budget. It's, these are the sources. So the sources are across the top, General Fund, Street, Building Permit, Room Tax, and such, and then down the side of the departments. So you have the division of the total dollars being proposed, the $8.5 million, and how that's distributed between the departments. Now, this slide is actually the positions, and this will show you how the positions are being proposed for the departments and then how, where the funding sources are coming from. So you have the total of the 54 positions, 29, almost 29, coming from General Fund and then the others, from the other funds. When we go into the General Fund summary, this is a slide we talked about previously. We're increasing the fund balance. The budgeted fund balance for fiscal year 22 was 13%. We're increasing it up to 14%. And we're continuing to fund, make increases in the unfunded liabilities. These reserves are funded to reduce outstanding or contingent liabilities, and these include OPEB, risk, and workers' comp. When we look at the General Fund, how is it distributed? Well, we have $269 million in revenue and 58% goes to public safety. Some goes to parks, admin, debt service, Public Works, municipal court, and community support, but the bulk of it goes to public safety. When we look at the proposed positions for just the General Fund, these are how they align with council strategic priorities. We have $3.7 million in total for these positions and almost 29 positions recommended. This slide gives you an idea of the breakdown of C-tax, property tax, and the fees, and the various other resources we have. We have total revenues and other sources, which does include the beginning fund balance here of $301 million. The C-tax as proposed is estimated at 6% higher, and property tax is estimated at 5% higher. When you look at the General Fund revenues, and this just includes the revenue piece of it, not the fund balance piece, you have $269 million. 38% is from C-tax and 26% is from property tax. So in total, you're looking at, the largest portions of the budget are from consolidated tax and property tax. When you look at the expenditures for the General Fund, the General Fund expenditures, the largest portion again, obviously, is salary and wages and employee benefits. And in total, we have the $301 million with an ending fund balance of the $32.1 million, which is the 14%. And so we are presenting to you today a balanced budget. This is a visual breakdown of the expenditures. So 78% are on salary and benefits and 17% on services and supplies, and this is typical for a service organization. For the General Fund 10-year projection, this is what we do to ensure strategic, strategic investments are being made as we go along each year during the budget process, that we're aligning what's being presented to you with council's priorities. And we're also ensuring that we can fiscally, be fiscally responsible and we can sustain what we're presenting to you. So as you can see over this 10-year projection, we have an ending fund balance that we're sustaining over the years of anywhere from 14 to 15% over this 10-year projection. And this is how we actually projected to get to a balanced budget a few years ago, was using this similar technique.
Ms. Van Buren, how much longer do you have in terms of the presentation?
Probably just a little bit more. We have to kind of touch on everything since this is the hearing.
Okay, let's keep going with the presentation and then we'll come back. And Ms. Breckus, you'll be first up.
We have listed here the special revenue funds. These consist of the monies that have to be accounted for in a separate fund because the funds are dedicated for a specific purpose. The largest ones in here are the street fund and the room tax fund, so we will focus on those in the next couple of slides. This is a new slide that we added just to give you an idea of what's in these special revenue funds. Most of the funds in here are for services and supplies and other items that come through here. We do have the street fund. You can see salary and benefits as a portion of that and service and supplies, but it's mostly capital that's in that one, and it's mostly capital in your HUD and state housing and the CDPG. When you go into the street summary, we have $33 million of total revenue. Most of that is capital projects, 54%. The additions that are proposed in this budget are 3.25 positions that would be new positions to the street fund. And then these are the capital projects that were previously discussed with council at the May workshops, $22.1 million in capital projects in the street fund. You go into room tax, we're estimating to receive about $3 million in room tax. The room tax is split 50% council and 50% to parks and recreation. And on the right-hand side, you have the items that are proposed for the council portion and for the parks portion. And next up, we have proprietary funds. Proprietary funds means these funds are run kind of like a business. So you have the sewer fund and the building permit fund, and then we have the internal funds of the fleet, risk, medical, and workers' comp. And those are internal service funds that we, the city provides those services to the departments, and then the departments pay into those to pay for those services. For the sewer fund, it's $120 million. That's split between the items that you see on the right-hand side are the uses of those funds. Sewer reuse is a 26% and sewer lines are at 22% as the highs on that. There are 8.5 positions that are being recommended for this. This does include the two additional positions that were not presented in May that were the change from the tentative to this budget. And the total capital projects of $111 million. We go into the Building Enterprise Fund, that's almost $13 million, and half of that is spent on the activities associated with building permits and enforcement. 8.35 positions are being proposed in the Building Permit Fund. And then we have the Internal Service Funds. This is a new slide. I just wanted to give you an idea of what the cash balances are for the Internal Service Funds. We have the motor vehicles, the fleet, the medical plans, risk, and workers' comp. You can see that workers' comp is starting to gain ground on the cash balance. It's still very underfunded, but we are gaining ground on it. The medical plan, you can see, stays around $20 million, anywhere between 20 and 25 million. That's why we've been able to keep the rates relatively flat for premiums for the employees is because that fund is doing very well. And then in risk and motor vehicle, those are areas that typically right now are running around $5 million. Prior to this, they were much lower, but we have been building those up. In the Capital Improvement Plan, we have general capital projects, room surcharge, event center, parks, and the capital tax fund. In the general projects, we have the $4 million that were, that was previously discussed with council with these projects. And then in the other, the other capital project funds, these projects remain the same as what was presented with the May workshops. And then again, the bond proceeds, this is the anticipated split between the projects once that bond is issued. In the debt funds, we have the City of Reno Debt Service Fund. That includes the Krebs Fund, the fire apparatus, medium-term obligation in there as well. And also in this one, it will include the $60 million bond that's scheduled to be issued in July. Then we have the Cabela's, the Railroad, the Event Center, and the SAD Funds. When you look at the City of Reno debt in a chart, you'll see that the, the total debt is the two lines together. The blue is the general obligation debt, and then the orange is the total other debt portion of it. And you will see that going up in the 2023 year, and that is based on the $60 million general obligation bond, and then also the anticipated $34 million sewer general obligation bond, and that would be done through the state revolving loan fund. Then we'll move into the fee schedule. On the fee schedule, when we talked about this during the council workshops, we did present several options. One of the things that we had on there was the, we had a new fee study done this year, a fee report, comprehensive fees to determine the cost of these, these items that the city is providing. That fee study was not completed until March, late March of this year. And although we've provided that information to council, we are not recommending to use that at this point because we just haven't had a lot, enough time to really dive into that. And so what we're suggesting is that we dive into that this next year and really do some more workshops and things on that to go over those. The last fee study was done in 2016, and we really believe that some more work needs to be done as far as analyzing that and bringing that back to council at a later time. So at this time, we're just recommending that we go with the proposed CPI increase for those fees that are applicable. The building valuation table would be updated for the building fees. And then Parks and Recs did present year three of their five-year plan during the workshops. That is being presented. That is being presented as well. And then there's no change in the finance or the court fees. And with that, that is the end of the presentation for the City of Reno. I do want to mention that we did present this information to the Financial Advisory Board on Thursday, and they did go ahead and make a motion to support and recommend this budget for adoption to the council.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Van Buren. I appreciate it. Is it accurate then that we're going to talk about the redevelopment agencies, one and two, in a separate part?
Yes.
Okay. And will we have to, and this is a question for the clerk, do we have to open the redevelopment agency? Because I don't see us agendized in that way, so perhaps I just want some clarity on that.
Yep, we can open it right now and take roll.
Okay, let's do that. Thank you so much.
So we will call to order the redevelopment agency board for Wednesday, May 18th. I'm going to go ahead and call roll. Councilmember Reckes.
Here.
Dour.
Here.
Delgado.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Shevey.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the redevelopment agency board.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, any public comment?
Madam Mayor, we have no public comment. We've not received any correspondence, and we have none registered.
Okay, thank you so much. Item E3, approval of the agenda, may I get a motion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, Madam Clerk.
All right. Ms. Van Buren, I think we are going to move on to item E4, which is the public hearing. So we're just going to open that now so that we have both items open. So Madam Mayor, we're an open item.
Public hearing. Has any correspondence been received? Have our notices been given?
Question.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm taking that as a yes. You're good to go.
Yes, so it was noticed, no correspondence received.
Thank you.
Question. Are we asking questions on this first part? Is that what we're doing? Are we continuing to?
I had originally thought that we were going to complete Ms. Van Buren's presentations, and then I'll turn it back over to Madam Mayor, who may want to give us additional time, because obviously, there's a lot here, but I don't know which each individual member's interest may be. But it just helps Ms. Van Buren, I think, stay on track.
Whatever you want.
Great. Thank you. We move on to the redevelopment agencies, one and two. Just a quick map to give you an idea. Redevelopment Agency 1 is the downtown areas. Redevelopment Agency 2 is spread out over seven different areas around town. Redevelopment Agency 1, the general fund of that receives some motor vehicle privilege tax. And then it provides the parking gallery, income is the parking gallery rent from the Colliers Managed Parking Gallery. And then the expenses are related to that parking gallery as well. In the debt service for Redevelopment Agency 1, there are three bonds in that one, and that's the debt service that you see here. We have tax, ad lorum tax, which is property tax that comes in for that. It has not been enough to pay that debt, and so we've been drawing down on the cash reserves in that balance. And so now we are at a point where we are going to be needing to do a loan, and council did approve loaning funds from redevelopment 2 to redevelopment 1 in order to make those debt service payments. So you will see those payments out there as 1.2 million in the current year and then 1 million for the next year. In Redevelopment Agency 2, those property taxes have been going up pretty well. This agency, this area has been doing better than Redevelopment Agency 1. So the property tax in here has been coming in pretty steadily. It's increased from almost 2.5 million last year to 4.2 million this year. And the baseball agreement is paid out of this redevelopment area 2, and so it does still have the capacity to loan funds over to redevelopment area 1 until those bonds are paid off, and then redevelopment area 1 will pay back redevelopment area 2. In the debt fund for redevelopment area 2, there's just a small Cabela's loan in there, and that's the only items that we have in redevelopment area 2. And so with that, we have supplemental information on the back. I'm not going to discuss that information. It's just all of the org charts were updated as well to include the two new positions that are being proposed. And council has those, you have those at your disposal to use. With that, that concludes my presentation, so I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. That's okay.
Then I just had a couple of quick questions. On the room tax, I just wanted to understand, is the split between parks and art, is that, oh, sorry, parks and council-directed, I think it's called, is that by ordinance or is that by just sort of past history or what is that?
It's by ordinance, yes.
So we made an ordinance so many years ago, and that was the split?
Correct.
Okay, that's really helpful. That's what I thought, but I wanted to check. And then another question was on the fees. Let me just turn to it. So is this a change or is this exactly what you proposed? Because I was a little confused. Last time, we had the consultant here, and they gave a whole presentation. But then today, you're saying we're not doing what the consultant recommended. But were we already not doing it last time?
Last time, we brought it to council just to get input on what council wanted to see going forward. And we did provide the document with the fee study information compared to CPI, compared to what we were currently charging, just so that you could see the changes across those. And as you know, the fee schedule itself is quite large.
Very big.
And we really do feel like we need to do a deeper dive into it before we recommend any of those.
Let me just say it a different way. Is this proposal, because there's no backup here on this presentation, I mean, it's all here?
Yes.
Is it the same as what you presented last time? Or is there a change?
Yes, it is. The CPI changes, yes. And then the building valuation, and then the parks position, so it is the same.
So I have a specific question. I'm not sure where I find it, but I know that in the public realm, requesting public records can be, you know, challenging, and there's a cost associated with it. Are we increasing the cost for public records in this fee schedule? And do you know how?
That I'm not sure.
Do you know, Mr. Manager? Like, are we, in other words, I think there's a copy per page fee. I don't know.
I received confirmation we are not.
We are not.
That's really good. Thank you. I think that's very good.
Not on records.
Okay, I couldn't tell from this because under no change, maybe that would be one to list as records requests. That's good, very good. And I think for the moment, I know I had another question, I wrote something down. Oh, one of the other questions was, you said something about a 5% and 6%. This is right back at the way at the beginning. And I think it was at that point, I'm going to out to, Councilman Weber said, "We're going very fast." And I wrote it down as quick as I could, but there was a 5% and a 6% change in something. Could you just say?
C tax is an increase of 6% is what we're estimating for next year. And then property tax is 5%.
Okay. And those are based on trends that you've seen over this last year?
Yes. Property tax is actually, we get that number from the state, and then we verify it on our own, too, to make sure that it looks like, it looks correct and it's trending correctly. C tax, we do get a number from the state, and then we do our own projections, as well as we talk to other local agencies and make sure that we're in line with the same information that they're seeing.
The property tax comes from the state estimate, and the C tax comes from a kind of a regionalized.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Reckes.
So last session, we took a vote. It didn't pass to roll in at the request of the Historic Resource Commission, $50,000 into the budget. Was that rolled in?
No, it's not included, no.
What was the thinking for not incorporating that?
Manager Thornley had some thoughts on that.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, that request was made sort of outside the budget workup process, you know? And while it's not such a significant amount of money that we might not be able to find it in through an augmentation, we relate in the budget workup.
When would appropriate time for one of our boards and commissions to bring this forward when they're considering grant opportunities?
Well, I mean, I think that, you know, that particular board and commission with their adoption of a strategic plan, that never made its way to the city proper, could have made a request in conjunction with that, but that's not the route that was followed there. And so, you know, we need to evaluate that strategic plan, see where it fits in terms of how we're deploying staff resources and whether or not there's an opportunity for us to pursue what they're looking for.
This is very helpful. Thank you. And I'll make sure that they are able to watch this tape and understand that. And they've met since then, so thank you. The additional $10,000 for council discretion, where'd this idea come from?
Manager Thornley, did you want to?
That was an idea from me. Sort of, there's always more dogs and bones with respect to what we're trying to accomplish there. I thought it fit nicely with rolling up all those funds from travel and training and making one pot of money for our council to draw from. And we've had a number of instances over the last few budget cycles where, you know, we got to the end of it and there were more opportunities than we had budgeted for. And I wanted to make sure that if we were able, we were better able to support the council in that space.
And then this chief infrastructure officer, is that, you said we're adding 54 positions. Is this the 55th?
No. When we presented previously in May, we presented 52 positions. So now we're presenting 54. Correct.
In the supplemental materials for Day A, I did not see where that position drops into department-wise.
It should be under Public Works.
And, but it's paid for by the sewer division.
Correct. Several of the positions that are in Public Works are paid for through sewer as well.
I thought we were making a division in the allocation of the chief infrastructure officer. Okay, has a management analyst under it.
Correct.
I thought, and it's 100% funded by sewer?
Yes.
I thought then it's only doing sewer infrastructure. It seems counterbalanced to me to have someone funded fully under sewer and be this broad encompassing infrastructure title and be outside of the utilities division. Can you explain the thinking on that?
Manager Thornley.
Of course. Over the next five or six years, we have a number of sewer infrastructure projects that are going to take precedence over so many other matters. And what this position will do is it will free up bandwidth to concentrate there instead of focusing on many of the day-to-day tasks that our Public Works team takes on.
Why are you not putting them in the utilities division then?
Well, the utilities division is really dedicated to running the actual utility, not making strategic decisions or overseeing the projects that.
Okay, operations. Okay, I didn't realize that. I thought operations was over in Public Works. The collection system.
There are utility operations and there are Public Works operations. And as we, you know, stand up a utilities division, the day-to-day operations of those utilities will reside there. And the day-to-day operations of streets and the other, you know, the facilities maintenance projects that our Public Works teams take on so well will reside in Public Works.
All right. Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Van Buren, first of all, I want to take a step back before I ask some questions about specific things and just say thank you to you and your team. Thank you to the Financial Advisory Board for the work that goes into this. For the public who might watch or consider what we're doing as a city, how much time goes into the preparation of the budget from just a sheer human-powered output? I mean, can you just give us an estimate? I don't need it to be an exact numerical figure, but what's an estimate for how much time goes into it?
Wow, I, you know what, thank you for the question, Councilmember Reese. I'm not really sure to the answer that question.
It would be staggering, I'm sure.
I mean, we start the process, generally, we start the process in August, as soon as this is adopted. And then we get the actual pretty version and the online version, online version up and the pretty version and the printed form printed. And then once we do that, we start with the next year. So it's really a cycle, and it continues all year long. So to try to put a number on that, I'm not sure that I could.
Well, it's in the thousands of hours.
Oh, absolutely.
Maybe the tens of thousands. And I think it's important because, of course, people want to make sure that the decisions we make are well thought out, that we are sort of being strategic about those decisions, and that we, you know, aren't at the last minute sort of inserting our own selves into a process that perhaps is taking a considerable amount of time. I also want to ask about how many meetings has this body had as we prepare? Because you talked about the workshops.
Right.
I think each one of us has had the opportunity to maybe do one-on-ones, multiple rounds of them. Certainly, we as a body, it's the largest thing we'll do is to make the decisions here. How many meetings have there been in that regard?
Well, with council, we've had three workshops. We had in March, and then we had three workshops in May, and now we're having this discussion again. We also have had, you know, since January, ongoing, we've had meetings with the departments, ongoing meetings with the city manager, city manager's office as our staff. So a lot of meetings.
Well, and for my part, you know, as I started those meetings early on, if I had very specific questions about a specific department, I simply went and asked those department leaders. I asked, "Are you getting what you need? You know, are you finding the resources you need?" So each one of us has played a role in it, too. And I guess my point in, before I ask questions in my second round, is to say, this document that you've provided today is really incredibly well thought out. I thought it also is accessible to people who might be looking at it online. They can really find the answers to it in a way that's meaningful to them. And so I'm going to hold on to this, of course, as I do with each years, but this is particularly good and well done and well thought out. And I just want to make sure that you understand, I see the work that your team is doing. I appreciate the work that's gone into it, the thousands and tens of thousands of hours. Because at the end of the day, there are going to be some things where one knit here or there, I may disagree with or want changed. But on balance, I'm really happy about the work that's been put in. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I, too, want to thank you, Vicki, for this work. I know you kind of picked up the leadership role here late in the process, but I'm going to reiterate the appreciation for including the org chart, and I really liked the way you did it, which was you have the positions and you've identified where the new positions go. It's really important, since you've pointed out salary and wages make up the vast proportion of our budget. So thanks for that. A couple of questions for our manager. Many, many months ago, not just last month, I asked, and actually last year as well, I asked for a $50,000 consideration for historic resource consultant-type person to support all the departments in the city. And that also came up at our last meeting. I didn't ask you late, I asked you, you know, way ahead of time. And I just wondered, is that included here or?
It's not in this budget. What it is included in is an augmentation that will come through in the budget year we are presently experiencing.
This year?
Yes. Mr. Pingree has identified an opportunity that will be paid for out of the building enterprise.
I was wondering, that's what I was going to suggest. Okay. Then similarly, we also talked about a tree inspector. And the reason for that is even with no change to our tree ordinances, one of the biggest criticisms we're receiving out in the public is that for years, we have not, you know, enforced our current ordinances. And I know that you've added people, I'm very grateful, the tree maintenance workers, those are mostly people that trim and maintain the some 25,000 trees that we have in all our parks. But this is about permitting, and I know you added a landscape architect, I think, which I also think is a really good improvement. We used to have one. But I think they need, that's in-house, and that's reviewing permits. But I think we need someone outside, and I would like, while you're in this process, whether it's budget augmentation or enterprise, I'd love it if you could consider that for that. I assume it's not in here, because I didn't think I saw it.
Same vein. So the landscape architect that you've identified, that you referenced there, my understanding of how we're going to approach this is that we will get the landscape architect on board. They will be the primary point of contact and enforcement for our landscape requirements.
Okay.
And if that is insufficient, we will move on from there in terms of.
Okay. And last one is a, thank you. And then last one is a parks planner. I know that you've also added parks maintenance staff and so on, but I know for the eight years I've been here talking to our park staff, that one of the needs, you know, we're growing so much, we also need to add, just like we need to add police and fire, we have to add resources, you know, park resources for those people to have good quality life. And I know that they have been really strapped by not having a parks planner that they used to have also. And so what I'm really trying to do is go back to, you know, the pre-recession days, bring back some of these jobs that we used to do so we can continue moving our work forward. Do you have thoughts on that one?
I do have thoughts on that. I don't think. I do have thoughts on that. I don't think anybody here would disagree with your assessment that we'd like to get back to pre-recession complement there in Parks and Rec. My conversations with Director Schroeder include sort of a ranking of the needs of the department.
I understand.
And maintenance workers and tree maintenance workers in particular rank at the top there.
Gotcha.
And so, just in terms of parsing the request from the department, the Parks Planner was on there.
Ah.
But it did not rise to the level of the
Okay, well, something to consider strongly for next year, you know, or an augmentation, I would suggest. Thank you.
Councilwoman Breckus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last budget, we put in this city ombudsperson position. I'd argued it should be a contract, but it was a position. Is that still in this budget?
Yes, it is.
Is that position currently occupied?
I don't know.
Why is it not? I have a hard time having, rolling over a year with a position. That was a new position. I felt it wasn't firmly identified. I don't even think it was in our slate of complements. And it did get filled. So have you made efforts to fill it? Do you have a job description? Do you have a recruitment?
We've had two recruitments, and the candidates' backs have not been satisfactory. We have not found a person who's a good fit for that role. And I think that that role is incredibly important, and there's a certain je ne sais quoi about it. And we simply have not found the right person to fill it.
Well, here's my thinking is, one, I think we should be providing a memo on the job outline, because it was a little vague when we left budget. It's been a year, it's still unfilled. Two is, you know, consideration of contract. And three, you know, I don't know. I won't say. I will just reflect my concern about putting this Chief Infrastructure Officer fully on Sewer, if they're going to be doing other tasks. I've seen this city's budget use the Sewer Fund in areas outside of the Sewer Fund, and then have problems with that. And this Chief Infrastructure Officer looks like, you know, just by title, it's going to be doing other things. So if there's some salary savings for General Fund with this ombudsperson, I'd certainly slot 40%, 50% of budget over there, General Fund. Just a thought. I want to ask about our investment policies and our cash imbalance. We've changed up the way we report to the council, the fiscal, and we're getting some information we didn't get in the past, which was where all our cash imbalance is hanging out investments. I mean, obviously, we have an investment policy. And I bring it up in this context, are we still following that same investment policies?
Yes, we have investment policies, and we do follow those.
But where's the information of how the cash is held and where the cash is held?
I'd be glad to get that information for you.
Okay, I'd like that in the quarterly. There's a lot of new financial instruments out there. I want to make sure we haven't strayed from those. Thank you. And then, one last thing is, I noticed that the resolution that you have prepared for us today has a final whereas related to the baseball settlement. Why is that relevant and in there?
It's in there because there was a time when there weren't enough revenues coming in into the redevelopment areas, and the General Fund was backfilling to pay that obligation. And so as part of the resolution, it goes forward, because if revenues did not come in, the General Fund would be obligated to backfill to pay that. But that is not something that we're doing at this time. We haven't done it for several years.
Okay, yeah. It just, you know, the whereas really is a broad guidance. And if it's not relevant, you know, maybe the resolutions be scrapped. And that does read the last point. At our last workshop, or actually, at last meeting, you weren't here for the bond offering, we talked about how much General Fund we brought into that debt for the boulding, building, and enterprise. And you sent me that table again. It was in the budget materials earlier. But just for refresh and following that loop, is last budget, we were about $2 million of General Fund into that debt service? My calculations were about $19 million or so. But this year, we're not planning any General Fund into that debt service, correct?
No, we had budgeted in the current budget $2 million, but we do not need it, because the revenues have come back up to normal levels from the time when the businesses were shut down.
Okay.
And for the next budget that's being proposed in front of you today, there's zero.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Van Buren, can we look at Slide 51? This is the total city of Reno debt. It'll just take a minute to get it up there. But two things. One is, I'm excited about your statement, and I think it bears repeating, that this will be a balanced budget, right? This is something that had been planned for several years, and it took some time to get there, including, you know, a pandemic that perhaps created some slowdown in that effort. But how long has it been since we last had a balanced budget?
Oh, I don't, I, more than a decade.
So it's a, I suppose, again, it's something that bears repeating, that's an exciting thing about the city. It certainly impacts our, I suppose, our bond rating, credit rating. All the financial indicators are a good thing. What is the high-level takeaway from this? Because when I look at this chart, and the first thing that jumps out at me is the 2009, $190 million for re-track. And so then I extend out into 2023, where we have made some decisions about strategic investments in our parks, in our public safety. What do you want us to take from this particular slide?
Sure. Well, you can obviously see that the 2009 was the high point, as we go back over this history. And so that was more than a decade ago at that point. Even with issuing the $60 million bonds that we have coming up, we are still not even close to where we were more than 10 years ago as far as debt. So we've really paid down debt. What you see on here is kind of a typical cycle for a city or an entity like a local agency, where you have times where you can fund some things with cash, or then you have bigger projects that come up where you need to take out some bond money. And so you'll see, we pay down debt, and then we take out debt, and you pay down debt. And it's really a cycle.
Well, and I appreciate that. I suppose one thing that would be interesting to me is to compare this to our population growth. And so if I think about where we were in 2004 and where we are today, the population has just expanded, you know, incredibly. And so it might be an interesting thing to juxtapose against it. I suppose it also speaks to the fact that debt is different among government entities. How would you say we are in comparison to other similarly situated cities of our size? Meaning, are we, are we doing well? Are we, how goes it out there? And when you look at, because you're, in your position,
Right.
You spend a lot of time talking both in-state and out-of-state, and examining based on your experience where we are. So how would you compare us to other similar-sized cities?
We're actually doing very well. When we first anticipated going out for a bond to do these large projects for this $60 million bond, we had a lot of meetings, and we prepared a lot of information as far as what healthy debt looks like and what the ratios are for healthy debt. And so we did a lot of comparisons against other agencies, local, and then other agencies, you know, in the southern portion of the state as well. And compared to those agencies, we're actually doing very, very well.
And the fact is that we submit to other various agencies. I think Councilmember Dewar sits on one of those agencies that evaluates the way in which municipal and local governments structure their debt. But it's to say that it's just not us flying by the seat of our pants. We have a lot of eyes looking at what we do all the time, right? Both at the state level.
Absolutely.
And so what are the agencies that we submit to or might have oversight or examination of our debt?
The agency that you mentioned is the Debt Management Commission. And so anytime we issue a bond like this, we have to go forward with the Debt Management Commission. We provide the information as far as what is backing the, what will be backing the payments, how that calculates compared to what our maximum caps are. There are a lot of calculations based on that. We also do submit to the Department of Taxation as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, any more questions from councilmembers? Seeing there are none. Mr. Manager, would you like us to take a motion on this?
Well, we have
Madam Clerk?
I believe we've done the public hearing for both the city and the redevelopment agencies, and that leaves us with three resolutions that we need to vote on.
Okay, can we do those?
You roll them up in one.
Yeah, can we do them in one, and then ask questions if anyone has any other questions on these three? Sound good?
The city of Reno.
What do you prefer?
Yeah, for the record, John Shipman, City Attorney's Office, because we have two governing bodies, if we could, maybe just take each one in turn. Legal would appreciate it.
Okay, so I'll give you a motion. Then, am I correct? E. You want to do B2?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's take a motion on item B2.
Move to approve staff recommendation and adopt the resolution.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we are going to head over to E42 and E43.
So, Madam Mayor, it's my privilege to move to adopt staff recommendation and move to adopt the resolutions.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, one thing I do, I want to bring up, because I don't want to forget it, because I don't know if you started off this way. He's not in the room, but I do think that we should sing "Happy Birthday" to Mr. Chris Pingree. I'm sure you are somewhere in Zoom land, maybe. So, Chris, happy birthday. What are you, 21?
He sure looks at Madam Mayor.
Right?
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, Chris is in the room, and he's raised his hand. So we're going to go ahead and move him into the chamber.
Ah, there you go. Well, good morning or good afternoon, birthday boy.
Thank you, everybody, for the kind birthday wishes. I appreciate it.
That could have been bad. We could have found him sitting by a pool, or, yeah, virtual background, sure, sure, sure. Well, Madam Mayor, I'll lead us in singing "Happy Birthday" to Mr. Pingree.
Perfect.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Chris. Happy birthday to you.
You guys are the best. Thank you so much.
All right. Happy birthday. We'll see you soon.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
You, too.
All right, Madam Mayor. So we're going to move into rounding out this meeting. So for item E5, to close out RDA, is closing public comment, to which I have none. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry. So I have a motion, or I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. So now we're moving on to item C, which is closing public comment for our general Reno City Council meeting.
So I would love it before we close our hand, we would love you to come. We have something very special for you, and you're going to go very proud to wear this everywhere you go. Come on. Carrie's going to do the honors. She's going to make sure. Come on. Come on. We hear you have done a tremendous job, and I know that you have had a lot of pride, and you are a rock star. And you should be so proud of all this budget and what you've accomplished. So we want to make sure that you get this. And I'm sure you've had a massive neck ache right until you're done. You look a little like, 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 and all this. All right, well, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have some public comment also. Go right. Go ahead. Thanks. I know it's a lighthearted moment, but I want to discuss the fact that we had a member of the public escorted by Public Safety Officer out of our building today. And that's the only, as I can recall, in almost 10 years I've served on the city council, the second time that someone's been escorted. The first time was the guy over at Washoe County who threw the green stuff or sprayed the green stuff. And, you know, it was over his objections. And should that person follow with a complaint on public open meeting laws? I just want to be clear, one, that I do not see in our rules any regulation of dress decorum. And that was the, I think, what triggered this person. And I don't, maybe triggered isn't the right word. It was the objection that the person was commenting on. And secondly, it is under our rules 2.3, that when the mayor's absent and the vice mayor is not able to preside, and I can certainly understand someone remotely not wanting to preside, that it is by a vote of the council who is the presiding officer. We did not vote on who was the presiding officer. It was more or less assigned to a member. And I will, in the future, raise that point of order. I thought, you know, it didn't matter. But I think in this instance, it did, and I will. And I also want to just raise those issues, because we could be faced with something, I think, very likely. All right. Bye-bye. Thank you, Councilwoman Breckus. And feel free, anytime before that happens, to speak up. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. All right. So I think you just need a motion, am I correct?
Second.
All right. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, great day, everyone. Thank you so much, Vicki. You're amazing. Good job. You should be proud.